There was, uh, in, in.
All right, we'll call this regular meeting of the Sturgis Common Council to order on a Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. First item's approval of the agenda. Got a first by Becca.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. We've got an agenda. Please stand, remove cover, and join us for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is informational reports. None included in the minutes this time, so we'll catch up with that. At next meeting, there'll be some ratified minutes from different boards and such. Item five is announcements and praise. I'm gonna take a moment and pray. Join me if you'd like to. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the ability to come before you. Uh, we thank you for this community. Uh, we just thank you for the blessing that you give us in Christ and the sacrifice on the cross. Uh, you condescended to earth, you live perfect and, uh, take our sins. We thank you for all you do and all the blessings we have. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Um, couple things I'd like to make comments on under announcements. Uh, exit thirty-two recycle center. It's important to know that it is truly a recycle center, not a trash facility, so it does add to the city's work and sorting and things like that when people don't use it as it's properly designed. I guess another comment I'd like to make on it is it's one hundred percent paid for by the citizens of Sturgis and it's intended for one hundred percent use by the citizens of Sturgis and we hope if you don't live here, you can find the proper places to put it. So. I had those notes. Um, one other thing is next meeting, which is two weeks from today because the Monday before is Martin Luther King Day, so that's also a holiday. So, two weeks from today is the next regular scheduled council meeting. Any additions from council for announcements and praise?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Uh, this weekend, the Sturgis AAU Club is holding its annual tournament. It is, you know, short of a big national tournament that's happening on Saturday. It is, our club's tournament is the biggest tournament this side of the river as far as youth wrestling goes. It'll attract somewhere between four hundred and five hundred kids that'll be wrestling there, and so it does bring in a fair amount of people to the community. Uh, but the difference for us this year is it's on Sunday instead of Saturday.
Cool. Appreciate it, Dean, and appreciate all those volunteers that put it together, so. Any other additions? Item six is council's update, and actually on the first meeting of each month is the department head's side of things, but we've been through all department heads already once, and so we'll just wait and continue on the schedule of next meeting being a council's update. Item seven is city manager's report, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Ainsley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, the report today is, uh, part of your annual, uh, requirements, and it's just a listing of all of our volunteers, um, that fill various, um, roles within our organization, from planning commission, municipal utility board, park board, uh, library board, and our volunteers with our, uh, volunteer fire department, also uh, the police department and others. You can see that we have, we are blessed with a tremendous number of volunteers. Uh, we list them in our minutes because they are covered by our various, um, insurance policies, not health and not dental, but instead liability and, uh, those sorts of insurance policies. Um, and other than that, we do actually have one, uh, payroll change, and that's, uh, we have one of our custodians that is returning, uh, back to full-time work. Are there any questions?
Any questions on Daniel's report? Appreciate it, Daniel. Item eight is consent calendar. We have eight point one through eight point four tonight. We have approval of the agenda. We have a resolution for annual salaries. We have, uh, other annual resolutions. I'd like to make the comment, we could pull it off certainly if council desires, but in the creation of this document, there was some previous council members that were put on the resolutions, and the corrected one is available, is on the website. It's all done there, but, um, the corrected resolution is the one that we're considering, I guess is the best thing to say there. But does council wish to remove any items and discuss them individually?
The minute should be seven zero on that vote.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove, um, item eight point two from the consent agenda, please.
We have a first by Becca. Is there approval included with that, or?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I, I moved to approve the consent agenda with the exception of eight point two, which needs to be removed.
First by Becca. And a second by Kevin. Does council wish to remove any of those other items that are on the consent calendar? Or anybody in the public wish to remove eight point one through eight point four? None being heard. Is, all those in favor of the motion with removal of the minutes, please indicate by stating yes.
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 Opposed to no. That motion carries. Becca, I'll turn it over to you on eight point two.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, in looking over the minutes from the December nineteenth meeting, I noticed that one of the votes, um, just needed to be, um, corrected. And that is... Do I need to state what it is, or just, okay? So, it was for agenda item. This is for December nineteenth. It was agenda item ten point five, the discussion and direction on David Drive in East Avenue. Um, the vote needs to be changed on the third, um, motion to seven zero unanimous amended. So I move to approve eight point two with the correction.
We have a first by Becca on the minutes.
Second.
We have a second by Tony. Any further discussion, public or council, on the minutes and the correction thereof of last meeting? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
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 Opposed to no. Adam, please note unanimous for the roll call on the minutes, please. Item nine is approval of the claims. Questions, comments, concerns on any of the items being paid tonight? First bills of twenty-three. Public or council? None being heard. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Got a first by Dean.
Second.
Second by Aaron. Any last discussion when you're looking through there? All those in favor of the motion to approve the claims as presented, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. Please note unanimous on that roll call, too, please. Item ten is actually a Board of Adjustments for Variants. Uh, this is a use on review and other administrative appeals. It is necessary to adjourn the council as a city council and to, uh, change it over to as a Board of Adjustment, uh, for the, for the motions that include variances and use on reviews. So, with that being stated, I'd also like to state, is there any known conflicts at this point in time with this item presented? None being heard and being said as a Board of Adjustments. Item ten point two. Actually, I think we should have a motion. Actually, I'd... We do need a motion on that, Eric. I can't remember what we do on that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you just need to convene.
Convene, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, good, thank you. I can't remember. We've just done this once before with the, with the new policy here. Um, item ten point two is the public hearing on the use on review for thirty-three fifty Canyon View. Mr. Smith's already in place. Thanks, Dave. Go ahead.
Right. Um, thank you, uh, Mayor Council, acting as the Board of Adjustment tonight. The item before you is a, uh, conditional use and review application that was submitted by Julie Kaiser of thirty-three fifty Canyon View Court. Uh, Julie intends to operate a, uh, in-home hair salon at her residence. Uh, days of operation will be Tuesday through Friday and every other Saturday. The applicant will have no more than two customers at any one time. An in-home hair salon is an allowable use permitted on review within a medium-density residential housing zone district. Per the use and review application process, notifications have been made to landowners within two hundred feet of the property and signage was placed on the property for at least twenty-one days. If the business causes an impact to utility services beyond those typical of a residence, then all utility rates shall be charged as commercial, two separate unit charges for all city utilities, and the county may assess portions of the property at commercial versus residential rates. Also, um, the city, uh, is not responsible to ensure the safety of any customers, uh, getting to and from the residence acting as a, uh, business. This was brought before the Planning and Zoning Board, and it was unanimous to, uh, to bring to the Board of Adjustment, and the recommendation was to pass.
Any questions for Dave? How about public input? Questions, comments, concerns on this public hearing of a use of an in-home business? None being heard. Is anybody willing to speak up and make a motion?
I motion to approve.
We got a fir-, we got a first by Tony and a second by Preston. Any last discussion, public or council? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
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 Opposed to no. That motion carries. Uh, item ten point three is actual adjourn the Board of Adjustments and convene back the city council. Thanks, Dave. Item eleven is consideration, eleven point one is consideration, approve the transfer of retail on-off liquor licenses, or liquor license. This is from the Sidehack from one owner to another. Daniel, you got the staff report over there?
Yes, I do. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is from the current owners of, uh, Sidehack. They are selling the property, uh, to new owners. The, um, the property has, uh, all of their, uh, property taxes fully paid. There are no known, um, felonies out on the, uh, on either the existing owners or the, uh, potential owners of the, uh, of the license. Uh, we believe that the property transfer is supposed to close in the next several days. Um, and so what you're requesting to do now is to approve a license transfer. Um, once the property actually closes, then we would submit this to the state. The state is the one who makes the final decision, so essentially what the council's doing is providing a recommendation to the state. Um, but you would not be formally doing that until the property actually closes on it. Um, because otherwise you would be, um, transferring a license to an individual that doesn't actually own the property. And so, um, what would happen is, assuming that the council approves this, um, then the staff would hold on to the application and then forward it on to the state, um, at the time of closing. Are there any questions?
How about public input on a transfer of a liquor license between owners?
Are the, are the gaining parties here?
Question is, are the new owners present? Appears no. Go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, Daniel, isn't it just a typo in the, uh, DBA portion of that where it's, uh, Sidehack Salon?
I imagine that would be a typo. I haven't been in there recently, but you don't usually see a lot of haircuts happening, so.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We got a first by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Aaron. Any last discussion on the transfer of the license once the property has closed? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
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 Opposed to no. That motion carries. Item twelve is second reading of chapter fifteen point zero seven. This is right-of-way maintenance, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as stated, this is a second reading of the right-of-way maintenance ordinance. Um, the, the ultimate goal of this ordinance is to ensure consistency on maintaining right-of-ways throughout the community. Generally, it's the landowners that maintain the right-of-ways, but in certain circumstances throughout the city, the city has taken over those duties. The goal of this ordinance is to put that duty back on the, those landowners, plus maintaining or setting up, uh, standards for maintenance of the right-of-ways. Um, from the first reading to the second reading, the primary revisions are all just more clarifying the, um, types of vegetation, things of that sort. Um, trying to narrow it down to grasses and weeds rather than using the broader terms and keeping it more specific to ensure clarity within the ordinance and to ensure the average person can understand. The... Beyond that, there's no substantive changes. It's the same ordinance that's been presented through the discussion, through the, uh, first reading, and the staff recommends approving the second reading. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any specific questions for Eric from council?
I had a follow-up question, and Rick, he might have to intervene off the cuff, but we had questions in the discussion about going to the high school on Highway thirty-four. Is it just west of the high school where the bike path ends and that's as far out as we've ever gone? Does that make sense, what I'm describing?
No, we, we go all the way out to, uh, the Kickstart Glenco Road is, since we're annexed in, that's the, the city limits. We go all the way out there. Um, I think probably the last two years is the, is the, is as recent as we've had to mow those properties. Um, Kickstart does a really good job of maintaining their property. Um, this year, we even did, uh, in front of the Iron Horse Campground, and then, of course, uh, we do have the responsibility in front of the BLM, uh, property. Fort Meade always does theirs. Uh, on extreme wet years, sometimes we'll have to mow the, the median, the state median. Uh, seems like they, they're kind of on a program where they do it once a year. Uh, and they actually have some time constraints where they can't start mowing until a certain date because of bird hatch and, and whatnot. Uh, so there are times when we mow that, uh, in addition, but not on a regular basis. Um, you know, and, and just, I guess, you know, being the entrance to town, uh, we want it to look nice coming in and then with the bike path, uh, and the trails, so. But we do go all the way out to Glenco.
Appreciate that clarity there. Any other discussion, public or council? Bonnie, what do you have over there?
Just that there are a couple of syntax issues. I, I do appreciate that you cleaned up the, the diction and the vocabulary on it, but, um, there are a couple of syntax issues with page nine. If I can find my way there. Okay. Page nine, C two. Needs a comma between the first line of two. Where it says city, comma, that, um, which area includes native or re-adapted vegetation? That needs to be enclosed in, in commas. Does that make sense?
What else do you have there, Bonnie?
On page ten, um, let's see, it's, it's fifteen oh seven oh eight, I think. When I have this open by itself, I can make it big. It's hard to read when it's like this. Um, when you read that B. B, okay, or safety, that. The that is, um, needs to be gone. If you read it without the that in there, life or safety. Life or safety. And so then these are the things they're removing, grass or weeds, bush, shrub, grass. So the that doesn't read right in there. That has to come out. And then if you go down to four, um, to three and four, that doesn't read right at all. Um, you have to read off of B into three and off of B into four. So there's a syntax problem with those two entries there. Um, so if you get this, um, you probably need a which to go in between the, the number and the obscure, which obscure and which is determined by the city. I mean, that's the, that's the quick fix recommendation. Is to get rid of the that and put a which in on three and four.
For someone that enjoys college, college English. Any other discussions on second reading of the ordinance?
I would ask one thing. Um, and not that it's gonna happen with this, because this is more, but there's a reference in here to per titles twelve, eighteen, and thirty-six. And when you do an inclusion like that, it would really be good to say what part of twelve, eighteen, and thirty-six this refers to. Um, because I went to twelve, eighteen, and thirty-six.
Title eighteen's the biggest one, for sure.
Yeah. But, um, there really should be some sort of reference in there that tells you where to go in those for the reference that's included.
Appreciate your input, Bonnie.
And that I'm walking straighter.
Any other discussions on second reading? Council or public? Is there anybody willing to take a stab at a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to approve, um, the second reading of ordinance fifteen point zero seven, the right-of-way maintenance, with, um, the corrections as Eric sees fit. In, in order to clarify, yeah.
Yeah, and I second that motion.
So we got a first by Becca and a second by Aaron. Any last discussion? We'll go ahead and roll call. I'll start with myself. I'm yes. Mike.
Yes.
Angela.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Becca.
Yes.
Preston.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
And Kevin.
Yes.
Second reading passes with the motion, um, as soon as it's pub-, published in the paper, twenty days later takes effect. Item twelve point two is the first step in the ordinance process that the city of Sturgis undertakes. Uh, it is the discussion point, and this is chapter ten. This is community cable television franchises, so. Back to you, Mr. Miller, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, not sure if he's on the... Okay, perfect. I know, um, Lucas Peterson with Blue Peak, he's their, um, governmental affairs associate, is on the phone to also answer any questions if needed.
Wonderful.
Um, the purpose of this ordinance is to renew the, uh, cable franchise ordinance within the city. Uh, for the last ten years, the, there's been two cable franchises provided by the city, one to Midcontinent Communications, the other one to, originally to WOW, which then turned into VAS, which is now Blue Peak. And the goal of this ordinance is to renew the, the franchise agreement, essentially the same terms and conditions for the next ten years. The only real revision to this ordinance versus the current one is in two thousand nineteen, the FCC passed new regulations regulating kind of this local government franchises to cable operators. Uh, the, as part of that revision or regulations, they removed the requirement that cable, uh, providers provide other cable and video to, uh, local school districts. And also, it modified the city's ability to, uh, set base rates for, uh, the franchisees. Essentially, if there's more than one franchise granted, then the market will regulate rather than the city. If it's just a single franchisee, then the city still retains that ability to regulate the base rate. However, in this case, since there's two, uh, cable providers, their competition between each other will regulate the base rates. Happy to answer any questions.
Lucas, do you have anything to add via telephone on this discussion?
Uh, hi, uh, thank you for allowing me to join tonight. Um, I have, uh, nothing more to add. Um, but just want to say we are grateful for the partnership we've had with the city of Sturgis and, uh, look forward to continuing that partnership in the future.
Appreciate that. Any other discussion? Again, no action is necessary in this process, but when we do change an ordinance, we have a discussion first, first reading, then second reading. I guess my question would be, is it always a ten-year process?
Uh, I mean, the, the statutes allow for a twenty-year franchise agreement. Um, but ten years usually, that's what the previous agreement was, so we're just continuing that on.
Makes sense.
Oh, that is able to be modified, but I'd recommend it still staying at ten years just to create consistency amongst the cable providers within the community.
Makes sense to me. Any other discussions on this necessary ordinance that certainly wasn't on the priorities or on the radar at any point, but pretty straightforward stuff, for sure.
And just as a note, the, it, the city's statutorily required to put this into ordinance.
Right.
The franchise agreements, rather than just having kind of a, a standard contract, so.
Appreciate it, Eric. No further discussion on that point. Brings us to item thirteen, Other Matters Before the Council. An opportunity for the public and council to speak briefly on items that are non-agenda items, and I'll open it up to the public first. Anything needed to be said tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, I received an email from a, uh, resident that was unable to attend tonight, but she, uh, did send me a, a short email that she wanted, um, to be read, if that's okay. And this is from Allison Creed. Uh, she states, "In my opinion, the city has let tourists know why they should visit Sturgis in August and should now focus on diversifying the city's advertising in an attempt to increase year-round tourism. I believe more of the city's advertising expenses should be spent on non-rally features such as a future Sturgis Adventure Park, the hiking trails at the city dams, and other non-rally features. Sturgis is continuing to add new things, but we need to increase our non-rally marketing to people beyond our city. In my opinion, the advertising should be focused in the following cities: Gillette, Dickinson, Bismarck, Cheyenne, Box Elder, and Custer. I am requesting the city purchase a half-page ad in the two thousand twenty-three Sturgis Chamber of Commerce Evergreen publication for the future Sturgis Adventure Park. The cost for this ad is eight hundred dollars. The other prime advertisement spots have already been spoken for. Within this ad, the city's website and the adventure park's Facebook page would be listed. That way, people can be informed about the future park and follow along for updated information concerning the park. Thank you for your time."
Thanks, Daniel. Bonnie, you had something to add. Please come up.
This is just a credit where credit is due. Um, I wanna thank Rick for the, uh, his guys and how quickly they responded, and I bring this forward at this time because I'm probably not the only one who's gonna have a problem like this. I had a water leak that required my main to be shut off, and I didn't know, but just for public knowing, you go to the, the water office by the library first to start the work order, and then they call it in and activate it, but those guys were... and then they call it in and activate it. But those guys were there before I got home from the water office. And then again today, I've been six days without water. But today, when I went down to, um, get it back on, they were there in a heartbeat again. And so, Rick, thank you, um, for the diligence of your guys and the good nature. I think it was Brent that came today. And so, um, anyway, they were, they were great. And, and it was just such a quick response in a serious situation because I had water going everywhere. The good news is that the inch and a half of water in my basement was free because it came out of the pipe before it went through the water meter. So I thank you, city, for the water to clean my floor.
Appreciate your input there. And it's never easy. We know that.
Well, it looked like I was having a yard sale in the winter because I had everything on.
Anything else from the public for other matters? How about council? Anything to add? Mr. Miller, I do believe we have requests for executive session, but no action anticipated.
No action isn't anticipated.
Appreciate that. Is there a motion for exec?
So moved.
First by Dean.
Second.
Second by Preston. All those in favor of exec, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Pose to no. We're off to exec. It's 7:01. We'll say 7:07. Six minutes, roughly. Right? Last time I said five, and we couldn't quite get there.
I'm not getting tired so late, is it?